Alright, so it's six thirty-four, I'm calling this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board to order. If we can start with the roll call, that'd be great. Alan Weeks?
Here.
Amos Katam?
Here.
Kathy Kidd?
Here.
And we also, I think that's everybody, right? And Joanne Ziggman here. Okay, so we do have a quorum for the evening, so we can kick off the meeting. Before we get into the agenda, I just wanted to read some of the procedures for remote participation. This meeting is being conducted remotely over Zoom. Attendance by Planning Board members may be remote and shall count towards quorum. The meeting may be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. To use Zoom, you will need to use the link on the agenda or download the Zoom application. While conducting, uh, let's skip that part. While the board members are commissioners and applicants will be on video and audio. Public participants invited to speak by the chair will be in person on video. And or audio. Public participants joining by Zoom will be muted with no video feed from them. Public lines will be muted throughout the meeting to allow the board to conduct business and to eliminate background noise. For our general meetings and only for those items under which the Chair solicits public comment. Members of the public participating in the Zoom meeting may submit a written request via text chat, provided they include their full name and address for the record. Let's see. Any questions not addressed in the meeting may be answered afterwards. All votes will be by roll call. For public hearings during the public testimony portion of the meeting, do we have one of those tonight?
No.
No, okay, let's skip that part then. If you're joining by phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand, otherwise just use the Zoom buttons that you see on your screen. As in any public hearing, testimony offered must be related to the hearing being offered and off top commentary on distinct behavior will not be tolerated. Chair reserves the right to end the testimony of anyone who abuses use of the meeting platform and to remove them from the meeting. So with that, we'll start with our first agenda item, Thayer Estates, one fifty-four Elm Street. Ken, I'll pass it to you.
Alright, so, through the Chair, thank you, so, um, we have here tonight. This is actually for the property, two lots down from us, one fifty-four Elm Street. It seems to be Thayer Lane, I believe is the name that they're gonna call it. It's a four lot subdivision, uh, they have, uh, there was a construction cost estimate provided by Pat Brennan of PGB Engineering. Uh, dated October sixth, there is a cost of value associated with that. And the next step now is the board could vote to release the house lots, Al has the applicant, Al Endurnus, has made a formal request to release the four lots for construction. And typically what would occur is that the cost, uh, construction cost estimate is valued seventy-three thousand two hundred and eighteen. That's to finish the roadway all the way from, uh, what it is now. Uh, I believe it is the binder all the way up through as-built acceptance plan and deeds, the formal as-built plan set. Uh, landscaping, et cetera, seventy-three thousand two hundred and eighteen. So the board, uh, could vote tonight to release the lots in exchange for some short, some sort of surety. Some sort of surety to be provided by the applicant in that amount to be held by the town in the event something happened. Uh, and the town would have to come in and, uh, complete the job and finish it. There's no indication that would happen, it's just a standard process for roadway improvements, uh, and getting some form of surety involved in that. Typically, it's either a cash bond, check is delivered to the town. Or a performance by, uh, performance surety by a, an insurance company in this amount held. Or a three-party, uh, three-party lenders agreement. I believe typically they've done cash in the past, but I have all, um, we also have site work bond, uh, bonding. Uh, so that's typically what we're due, so the vote for tonight would be, we don't know what the form is, the form, uh, the form of surety itself is up to the applicant. But really tonight's vote, if the board so chose, would be to release the four house lots, there are four house lots, three in the rear and one up towards the front as a corner lot. Would be to release those four lots for construction in exchange for adequate surety. Uh, in a, uh, form posted by the applicant through the approval of Town Council.
Board members, do we have any questions or discussion?
Yeah, what, what is, uh, your recommendation?
I, uh, I recommend that this be released. Uh, the work has been, uh, the work has been completed thus far very well. Very well cleaned up, especially with the rain that we've had. Uh, I'd recommend releasing these four lots with the, um, the form of surety to be determined by the applicant and provided appropriately.
Did, did you inspect it, or there was someone else from town, from the town hall inspecting that?
Uh, Pat Brennan did some very initial inspections of it, I did as well. Typically, they get up to about base and binder, get the curving in. The curving is really the important piece, the curving and the erosion control. Getting those in are important and making sure that they hold in the event that there's a significant rainstorm, so there's no, uh, erosion or sedimentation, which there hasn't been. But thus far, it's been, um, it was done prior to my arrival here, but some of the inspections I have done, especially since the rain that we've had in the past couple of days and, and before, it's handled quite well and it's been, um, been well done.
Is, is this going to be a town road, or will this be a private way?
It's intended, it's intended to be pri- it's intended to be private.
Alright, does anybody have a motion?
Motion to approve, uh, the authorization for surety, uh, as presented.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, Alan Weeks?
Aye.
Alan, Amos Katam?
Aye.
Kathy Kidd?
Aye.
And Joanne Ziggman is an aye as well. Thank you. Second item on the agenda is a request, uh, is this what we just covered? No, this is different. Ken?
Yes, yeah, Thayer Estates is combined with the lot release and the con, uh, cost estimate. The next is just a general discussion of the permitting audit, yeah.
Okay, super, yeah, sorry, that's what I thought, got a little confused. So we were due to talk about the permitting audit tonight, I know two of our members aren't here. Ken, what did you, what were you envisioning for this part of the night?
It was mostly just a, this was a relatively light agenda tonight, so it's more of an FYI, I provided it to uh, town administration and the board members, it also gets cycled out to, you know, the appropriate department heads, things like that. Uh, this was done, this is the result of a, I believe it was a, um, either a grant or work through the, uh, UMass. I can't even, I don't even remember what the acronym they call it is, but it's the Center for Resilient Metroregions out at UMass. Uh, at my school at UMass Amherst, so, the, this is actually a professor of mine that I had. And so this was, this is just an FYI, it was not done, uh, there's nothing to indicate there was anything that was deficient. Or anybody saw as deficient, but there's always ways to improve processes with new state law changes and making sure that we're up to date. Uh, not just the Planning and Zoning Board of the Department here, but just collectively the town in terms of, uh, permitting and development process in general. And so that, just some of the items on here, this is, again, there's no formal adoption, there's no, um, you know, vote or anything, that's just an FYI of this is complete, this has been going on, I believe, for about s- three or four months, I believe. Most of the changes that were in here were very minor, they got through, uh, there were some initial comments from town administration and the, um, uh, Health Director. Those have been incorporated and I just kinda went through and reformatted it, so that tables were landscaped, so you could read them and it wasn't smushed up. I do note that some of the items for improvement are relatively low-hanging fruit, easy to accomplish. And things that I'm already doing just as part of how I operate on a day-to-day basis. This document was done before. Uh, much of the improved, much of the items here were included before my employment started, so things that are already in here or things that are in here as recommended, uh, items to do are things that I already do as a, as a day-to-day function. Uh, as a professional, so, things like, you know, we get things to the board when they're complete applications, the concept of checklists getting incorporated, I believe I had mentioned. Uh, checklists are now required in the state of Rhode Island where I just came from, so, a lot of those pieces are which were required back in Rhode Island are ideas that we could bring here in terms of making sure that, uh, checklists are updated. Uh, they're up to date, require only what we need and not having superfluous extra copies. And also just making sure that once an application is fully complete, it gets to the board only when they're fully complete. So we're not handing in half applications or, uh, half plan sets, things like that. So really, this was just an FYI discussion tonight to have you, uh, forwarded it to you guys and everybody such you could have it when you have a free moment to read, look over. If you have anything in particular importance you, you were focused on or you had an interest in. I do, uh, table of contents, there are quite, um, yes, quite a lot of areas that this, that this, uh, report touched on. Uh, some areas that you may not know that we have staffed to, or other areas where uh, you may not be aware that we do work in as well, so. It was just an FYI discussion for tonight to let everybody know it was finished. Here it is, and it's for your viewing and reading pleasure. And there are items that I do wanna tackle. In terms of updating regulations, I'm already starting on doing some of those things, just as a very rough, um, just a very rough, you know, rough job of getting, uh, familiar with everything and then just getting it so that we can, um, have things updated appropriately.
So Ken, do you, are you intending, cause there's roughly twenty-five or so, a couple dozen actions. Um, part of the implementation roadmap, are you? I know some of them require board approval, so how are you going to kind of, are you planning on divvying all of these things up as items for agendas, you know, moving forward over the next several months? Or providing like a progress data, uh, update at each of our meetings, or how do you, how do you see the actioning of this plan going forward?
So some of these items I'm still looking at, the website and public communication pieces, that's just, you know, fixing those up as I'm going through now, I believe I've gotten every item on the webpage that referenced Stephanie and her contact information, getting that, the webpage is a little bit harder to fix than it looks. But some of these are just, you know, low-hanging pieces that I can accomplish, I'll give updates on. Um, obviously, some of these other items are, uh, some of these other items on here may be, obviously much, we can identi- we, we can all see which those are. Some of these are far beyond just basic, you know, rule and regulation updates. These are, some of the global edits are just to fix up terminology, we can provide those to the boards as needed, some of these are, you know, like right now, I'm working on the administrative rules and regulations, which are not in Ecode three sixty. Part of what I'm doing now is putting them into, uh, getting it into the format for Ecode three sixty, but also updating it so that we're not, we're still requiring, you know, eleven sets of eleven by seventeens and three sets of twenty-four by thirty-six plans. We don't do any of those, so it'll be small items that I work on, I'd be giving updates. Uh, kinda getting to it as that particular piece either comes in front as part of the daily work that I do, or if it's, I get a free moment, laugh. If I get a free moment to approach some of these things, or if it comes up, then, uh, give an update as to, hey, I'm doing it, this is not something that's just gonna sit on a shelf. I don't have a set timeline yet, but there, these items are going to get accomplished in some shape or form. Obviously, you know, administrative rules and regs are a lot easier than, uh, merging the planning, merging this board with board repeals. There's, there's a degree of, of effort, work, and intensity of what goes into that process and substance, so. But again, as you see, a lot of these are rules and reg updates.
Yeah.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead, Amos.
I- is it possible for you, Ken, to extract a list of all the items that belong to this board? That are an ex- cons- uh, uh, consequence of this study? What are the actions? And i- if we can, if we can review this with you, uh, somehow and and see what, what, what are, what is the, wh- wh- what are those that are low-hanging fruit? What are those that are difficult? I, I can, I can assume that, uh, rewriting the bylaws is a big one, for example. Or editing the, the bylaws to make it more comprehensive, simpler, uh, document. Uh, but, uh, as you said, some are simple. It, it would be good to see all the items that belong to this board in one list. Uh, and maybe, uh, from your point of view, provide us an idea of your priorities, or what are the prioritization? Not, not because they are more important, because it's easy to go, go ahead and do them.
Yeah, certainly, I could, I could, oh, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, there's a lot of them here that are ticked for less than a year, in the short term. That's quite a lot of work for you, so I don't think that's super feasible, so it'd be good to get a sense of your priorities, and then.
Yeah, so I can take this, I can take this roadmap and create, and split it out, so it's just, you know, Planning and Zoning Board, those items. And a lot of this are also just reviews. Um, so really, the, right off the top of my head, I'm already working on the administrative rules and regulations. Not so much as the substance of, substance, yes, but also the fact that it's not in Ecode three sixty, like everything else is, so if you guys take a look at this, the text that you see, so if you just scroll up to page four, if you look at the bottom part of what my formatting was, the Wetlands Regulations, you see EC, uh, uh, Eastern Codebook Chapter five oh three, if you, that's a hyperlink, so if you click on that, it goes right into Ecode three sixty. Pretty much anything else like that are all hyperlinks in that color, I didn't put them as the typical hyperlink blue. But the one that you'll see is administrative rules and regs, A, it's important to me that it become just as readily available in Ecode three sixty as everything else is. So I guess the first one, just looking at it, and also, cause I've already gotten through some of it, are the administrative rules and regs, these are the ones that are not, they're, they're kind of a PDF from twenty eighteen. Some of these other ones, Affordable Housing Guidelines, I found them. And it's really more of a review of are these still applicable, given the changes in housing requirements, forty B, all that sort of stuff. And the others, I believe there's a section on the Plan Approval, so the forty R rules and regs, as well as our subdivision regs, in the sense of there's a lot of overlap between those three. Because, as you know, you guys are the Plan Approval Authority. And some of the comments as related to those are just clarifying, there isn't a separate group to do that, it is the Planning and Zoning Board. It's really just clarifying those types of things, so I kinda see those three together as just updating to make sure that it, um, it asks applicants what are actually needed in twenty twenty-five.
Alan, Kathy, do you guys have any questions? And comments?
Nope.
I, another, another. Yeah, uh, is, is there any actions related to, uh, electronic filing?
Everything is electronic filing, I know that, um, we don't take, I mean, I, I take a physical plan set here in the office, just if I wanna go play in the dirt or have to go do a site visit. Uh, but technically, we haven't done, there are no physical application files anymore, everything is done through permidize. That system is getting updated just on a regular basis. Um, I did just get access to the Select Boards', um, system for that, but in generally speaking, we do not have physical applications anymore, so Amos, if you wanted to subdivide your property, you're not giving me a single piece of paper.
Okay. Great.
I just want to clarify, Ken, when you say that you're like putting, um, the rules and regs up on the, the, um, three sixty site. Are you making changes, or are you just getting them up there for now?
Some, it's kind of a rough draft at this point of, they still reference, I think, eleven, ele- eleven copies of paper, um, some of it is just reformatting it to where it doesn't, just in practice, we don't need those things. Um, and putting it in the format, then when it gets to the point where I feel that it's in a, a better, like a rough draft version, I'll send it to, you know, we'll have the, we'll, you know, we'll start the process here with the, with the board and have you guys take a look at it, but some of the changes are, I don't need, uh, thirteen copies of the application and the plans, because everything's digital. Um, making sure that you're, uh, just still referencing that your stormwater standards are correct, that you're still, I would, and we're just talking about special permits and site plan review, the things that deal with quorum, voting, those things, they're not really rules and regs, they're more of like a policy manual or rules of procedure that just happen by the nature, so discussing things like quorum, how many votes you needed, a lot of it's really driven by state laws, so the actual rules and regulations pieces that deal with number of copies, what you need to show, that's getting cut and split out from the Chair, the Vice Chair, the function of, okay, when you have a quorum, it's gotta be these things, and the rules and regs, I don't believe it. Um, it doesn't take into account anything as it relates to, um, we couldn't have this meeting under the current administrative rules and regs. There is no digital, you know, remote Zoom, uh, remote meeting, uh, capacity, so really, it's just updating those things. And as I get further along into it, when this becomes on a, on an item, and I say, hey, we're gonna have a discuss, I'd like to have a discussion about this, it'll get into further detail of what that means, whereas things like the Chair, the Vice Chair, not really a rule or regulation in the sense of, you know, how many plan sets you submit and what you need to show on those.
Okay, so you'll come back to us once you have a draft, and then we.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
And same thing with everything else with, you know, anything with, yep.
Okay, super, so, does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Um, no, just that, Amos, I did see something in that, uh, document about using markup tools on drawings. So, I, I think it was in there, I forget where above, maybe towards the end.
Yeah, yeah, that was part of the, I believe there's the o- part of the discussion prior to the override, I believe, was looking into, um, increasing the capacity for permidize to do live plan edits. I've seen them, I've just never used them myself, but that is something that's in towards the end. I believe under, um, I forget what Wayne called it, it was like specific recommendations for improvements or something, and it talks about, um, three or four different softwares that can be used for live plan editing. And then also, what I do just wanna point out, staff reports, you guys haven't actually seen one of my full staff reports. I'm getting them back updated to taking my, the ones that I've always used from Rhode Island and tweaking them back into, uh, Massachusetts, but you guys haven't actually seen one of my full staff reports and findings and things like that, I've been kinda using the ones that we have here and adding in some analysis pieces to it, but, um, you have not actually seen one of my full staff reports yet, cause I haven't fully gotten the templates flushed out yet.
Ken, there is a comment that I wanna do, make, uh, not always, but here and there, we have a problem with appl- applicants that come to the meeting and they don't know how to present. They don't have control of Zoom, uh, they, they didn't prepare the files they wanna present. Uh, we have, eh, wasted time when that happened. And I don't have a recommendation what to say and what to do about that. But somehow, on your checklist, or somewhere, needs to say that, that you need to come prepare, you need to know how to, if it is a Zoom, you need to know how to work with Zoom. And you need to have the file accessible, and your computer working, and your bandwidth correct, so we don't have problems. Because we have been cases in which we wasted a lot of time with all the board waiting for that presentation to come.
Yeah, typically, what I did for, uh, in my meetings previously was I ran the IT, because I would get there early, we had a council chamber, we had the giant TV. I bought Bluetooth dongles for all of the giant TVs in City Hall, so we were able to take care of those things with minimum wires, but I was able to eliminate the IT issue by running the, it's like, the laptop that I have, the town laptop that I have. Those files would be on the laptop, ready to go, so that when we would meet, I was the one running the, the, the software, so, and we tried it out ahead of time. And we get those with the people that come in, I say, set, you know, we'll be working with this. You know, I'll make sure the, come in early, we'll get everything set up, but, yeah, I don't, um, as much as I may like to talk, when it comes to meetings, I like to make sure that the role that I play in it is it's gotta get, it's quick, it's done correctly, and we're not wasting time, because there are gonna be nights when the board has a lot of agenda items and we can't be spending time fooling around with thumb drives and HDMI to display port adapters and this, no. I can, I've taken that over from before, and I said, get in here, we'll hook everything up, and we'll make sure that, cause it, it leaves an impression, it leaves an impression on the board, because, you know, now, we're not doing the posters.
You, you say you are going to be running the presentations?
In the sense of just checking to make sure, like, if I shared the screen, I'd be like, or if we were doing a PowerPoint, I'd be, it'd be on my laptop, and they'd say, okay, can you, you know, next slide, or I'll listen to them, usually they'll get into a system where they're like, they'll raise their thumb at the podium and go to the next slide, so that there's no issue, I know that there's not gonna be any issues, because I've set it up previously and I ran through it before the board meet, before the board even got to the, either remotely or got to the board meeting room itself.
Currently, we gave the, uh, or the, the presenter, the, the, the applicant to, to run it, to run everything, uh, most of the time. And that sometimes is problematic.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with whatever, if I have, if somebody comes in and want, they've got everything all set up, they wanna use their laptop, that's fine, they come in ten, fifteen minutes early, and we'll get it set up, or if you're, if it's on Zoom, make sure you know how to do it, and, and then they know ahead of time, I always talk with applicants ahead of time and say, here's your meeting date, here's your hearing date. Make sure you get everything all set, run it ahead of time, you know, don't run it five minutes beforehand, I want you to run it day beforehand, and then the afternoon beforehand, just to make sure, do a test run on your own, you know, on your own laptop, however you're gonna do it, but, yeah, we've, we've been doing Zoom meetings for five and a half years at this point. Yeah, you need to be able to do the basics and make sure your share screen is correct, and I don't need to see your stormwater report, your fifteen hundred page stormwater report up on, up on it as well, if somebody has questions about that, we can deal with that offline between parties.
Okay, anybody else have anything else? So Ken, I don't know if you wanna put this on the agenda for the next meeting as well, in case Mickey or, um, um, Bob have anything to add? That's up to you, uh, otherwise, you can maybe just ask for their direct feedback, also.
I was thinking of either having it as a, um, you know, uh, after director updates, like parenthetically, permit, uh, permitting audit, like a standing item, correct, yeah?
Yeah, cool. Okay, um, moving on to board business, um, minutes from September twenty-nine. Does anybody have any comments or discussion about those? Then, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes, Ken.
Second, kid.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alan Weeks?
Aye.
Amos Katam?
Aye.
Kathy Kidd?
Aye.
Joanne Ziggman is an aye also. Um, our Chair is not here tonight, and neither is our Vice Chair, I have no updates. So moving on to Ken, Ken, do you have any updates for us?
Uh, just really quick, I do know that at the November third meeting, I believe it's on for the discussion tonight, as more of an FYI similarly, but on our November third meeting, the envisioned Easton twenty twenty-five update will be up for formal adoption in front of this board. It's in front of the Select Board tonight, just as a, uh, to close the loop on, created a committee to do this, here's their deliverables. And that will be available as soon as, probably tomorrow, in terms of, I just wanna do some final formatting, make it look nice. Uh, and that will be available for, uh, formal adoption at the November third meeting.
Great, alright, um, so with that, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Great. Alan Weeks?
Aye.
Amos Katam?
Aye.
Kathy Kidd?
Aye.
And Joanne Ziggman is an I as well, so the next meeting will be on November three, see you all then.
Good night.
Have a good night, guys.
Good luck.
Thank you.